This meeting of the Select Board is called to order on March 12th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the Chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the Chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording the meeting? Okay. Participating this evening, myself, Liz Klein, Chair, Joe Fisher, and Bill Ramsey. If you are willing and able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's definitely a lag with the camera. Can people hear and see okay? Yes. Okay. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes. You ready to proceed?
I make the motion to approve the minutes dated March 5th, 2024.
Second.
We'll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Next on the agenda is to consider approval of the request of Hingham Sports Partnership Incorporated for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for Hingham Sports Partnership Comedy Night 2024 to be held at the Loring Theater on April 7th, 2024 from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. We have Ray Estes with us. Want to come on up?
So this is comedy night. You have to start with a joke.
I have no jokes.
Good news, you're not the front line.
That's excellent news. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street, for Hingham Sports Partnership. Thanks very much for this opportunity. This is the third annual, if you will, return of comedy night. It was a longstanding event for HSP for many years, took a hiatus in 2015, and then we tried to bring it back right before COVID and had to cancel. Were successful in bringing it back in 2022. Last year was another great night, and we're planning a similar event this year. Very similar setup at the Loring Theater with about 250 capacity. We have three headliner comedians, new comedians this year that we haven't had before, so we're excited about that. We're in the process of fundraising for a very special project that Hingham Sports Partnership has been working on really for over two years now in trying to refurbish the old concession building behind the high school as the dock, which will be a health and wellness facility for all students at the high school. So we're excited about that. We're focusing our fundraising efforts on that project, and that night will be a really a nice evening to get the community out to support that, as well as the other endeavors that we're involved in for grants and scholarships alike. We've arranged for insurance and all the appropriate protections that we normally have. Parking is typically done on the street and the municipal lot, so I think it'll be a nice night, hopefully good weather. So we're looking forward to it. There are tickets available if you're... And it's not your daughter's birthday this time, so it's April 2nd, I think. Third, sorry.
Impressive. It is a wonderful event, and thank you and the Hingham Sports Partnership for everything you do. I noticed there was a request for a police detail. Has that been organized yet?
That's typical. We usually do that. They like it to be done the week before the event, so that's a call, and we set that up.
Okay, great. I didn't have any other questions about the application. Joe?
Where are tickets available?
So tickets are available at hangingssports.com. If you subscribe to any social media outlets, you'll see HSP advertising this event all over, whether it be Instagram, Facebook, Twitter. So there are many opportunities, but hangingssports.com is our website. There's a direct link to purchase tickets.
Yep, I've reviewed the application. I've got no questions. Thank you.
Bill?
How close are you with the fundraising on the dock?
We're just under 1.2 million. Our target, 1.5, so we're about 300,000 away. Our target is to finish fundraising by June. Interestingly, we now have a project manager onboard. We're working very closely with the school department. This is a school project, of course, but it's being funded directly and completely by philanthropy. And we actually just engaged with an architect who actually has been working on the project so far, but was the chosen one during the bidding process. So we're saving a little bit of time with that opportunity, and we just had a kickoff call, and we're moving forward. So we're really excited about the progress that we've made with fundraising, the team that we have assembled, and as a partner with the school department, it's working out really well so far.
Well, the Sports Partnership is a great organization. I know this is a very important fundraiser for you. I've attended it in past years. It's a great event, so no issues on my end. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
See you there.
Excellent. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Ray. Best of luck with the event.
Thank you.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Hingham Sports Partnership, Inc., for a special one-day wine and malt beverages license for Comedy Night 2024 to be held at the Loring Theater on April 7th, 2024 from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
Second.
We'll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Passed unanimously. Excellent. Thank you. Next on the agenda is discussion and potential adoption of property-assessed clean energy. Pace to finance clean energy projects. Just going to kick this off. Art?
If I could, this is just follow-up to a presentation a couple of weeks back and a longer-term conversation about whether to take advantage of a program that can provide an additional financing option to support commercial, nonprofit, or multifamily property owners with long-term capital to install clean energy projects. This was brought to our attention by HMLP. We've had extensive conversations with them, as well as with Mass. Development. We've got Laura Burns here, who can get us reacquainted, but I think the team here is ready to take any questions that anybody may have, with the goal of hoping for a supportive vote.
Excellent. Joe, do you want to start? I know you have raised some questions.
Sure. I had questions before. I did want to make sure that proceeding with pace did not burden the town or create unintended consequences in terms of our ability to raise taxes, and I'm satisfied that quite the opposite. I think it's a very positive... It will have a very positive effect on the town, and that the process of basically imposing a lean structure that works as a betterment process for financing these operations is the way to go. So I am absolutely in favor of this now.
Excellent. Bill?
No questions. I've spoken with Laura in detail about the program, and I'm comfortable moving forward with it.
Okay. Laura, do you want to add anything? Thank you for being here.
No, I think you've heard the whole story, and I hope you get all your questions answered.
Excellent. And Rob, thank you for being here for Mass. Development. Are there any questions or comments from members of the public? Okay, I'm ready to proceed if you're comfortable.
Yep. I make a motion that the Town of Hingham participate in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Commercial Sustainable Energy Program pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 23m, Section 2, and all other applicable laws.
Second.
We'll call vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent. Thank you, Laura, for bringing this forward, and everybody's hard work on this program, and patience while we did our due diligence.
Thank you very much for your support. I think it's going to be great.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is discussion of FY24 plans for opioid settlement funds. We have Sue Sarni and Liz Miller.
I'll be the tee up, like I said.
Sure.
Sorry, I had to turn off my microphone. So just to tee this up while they're getting ready, we had talked about this a couple of weeks ago, and thank you for your patience while we kind of got all of our ducks in a row to be able to answer your questions, but also to put forward as robust a program as possible. Liz Miller's been hard at work, Susan Sarni is back at it, and I think we're... I think we got a great presentation for you tonight, so welcome to go with it.
Excellent. Do you want to start with the Excel spreadsheet, or should we?
I just want to start off going over the plan. This is a 20-year plan to supplement and strengthen resources for our residents and their families that address substance use disorder, harm reduction, treatment, and recovery. We will use this plan along with guidance from the Attorney General, CARE Mass., and John Snow Research and Training.
I'm sorry, stop me. Do we have that? I can't see it.
It's in the packet.
Is it in the packet?
It's in the packet on the...
Should be this, I think.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So I didn't try to...
This evening, we are looking to ask for $17,000 of total funds be allocated to spend on these endeavors. This working plan is over 20 years. We will not spend all the money at once. Our goal is to address all the underlying root causes of opioid use disorder slowly and effectively. We will continue to work with the Select Board and the public on how these funds for the opiate litigation will be allocated. We will see you in June to go over more details for the FY25 plan.
Can I just jump in, Susan?
Sure.
The intent isn't for you guys to absorb this. This is to show you, we've got the beginnings of a 20-year plan, but this will change. That's the one thing we know for sure, is that this will change as we do research on what... where the need is and how to best allocate these resources. So this is just to show you that there's a 20-year plan. It's really obvious. We zeroed it out with revenue, that's expenses, that's zeroed out after the year 20.
But to be clear, on the agenda this evening is not the 20-year plan. What's on the agenda is really, which is Susan described, is to vote on the 17,000, and that... And this plan puts in context where that money sits. This is money coming in from the opioid settlements. It's coming in over a number of years, and quite frankly, there may be additional settlements that may supplement this. So this is a work in progress, as I understand it.
That's what I wanted to make clear. It's a work in progress. We're going to learn a lot in the next four months, as Liz is on board now, that we can do a lot of research and work with the community to figure out a great way that we can support all our residents. It's going to change once we learn what our needs are.
Right. Right. So just to recap for people, we did already approve the 8,500 for the salary line, so this is an additional 17,000, really just from now until June 30th, the rest of FY24, and then we'll review the plan for FY25. Right? Okay.
She's got a quick four slider.
Yeah, and I just wanted to go into a detail, but we can talk more about the spreadsheet.
This is for effect, to show you, there's a 20-year plan, not actually.
But also, just so we're clear, to the extent that there is money allocated for this fiscal year or any fiscal year, if that money is not spent, it's not lost. It just carries over.
Exactly.
And we're rolling it past the... It extends another couple of years. So that's why you see like the balance. We're going to keep moving forward.
Exactly.
Okay, so should we switch to the PowerPoint?
Hello? Does anyone else see that, or am I having a stroke?
No.
Stop in my tracks.
Just one other comment while you're pulling that up. On the 20-year plan, I know the funds are available for 20 years, but certainly I want to be cognizant of what the most immediate needs are, and if we need to front-load that money, I'd rather spend it where we see the crisis happening now and not feel like we have to kind of pace it in this way, if we see a more immediate need after your further research.
Of course. So the goals of this program is to identify and help those in need to reduce the stigma we have here in our community, to collaborate with engaged community groups, educate the community, and increase access to the resources that we have available. We're going to set revenue allocations, and we're going to also define procedures as we go through this opioid settlement funds. We're working with Town Council on all the legal forms and things like that as we speak. The next slide goes into the spreadsheet a little bit and just shows you FY24, what we have so far received and what we're looking to spend. You guys already allocated the 8,500 for the opioid coordinator, and this is just in prevention. We're looking for 5,000 for community outreach, RFP, training for the community staff, town employees, all residents with prevention ideas in mind. Any marketing material, we have allocated $1,000 for Narcan distributing... distribution, and then we're starting to work on our recovery piece, and this will be supportive services. What we're working with other departments, and we're finding out that in the police department, they can't transport if there's a bed available in another town, based on their rules, but we can pay for the transportation to get that resident to the bed and the services that they need. So that was the FY24, and we just wanted to also show you, we're going to be working on the FY25, but to let you know, this is how the plan's going to roll out with these categories. And then the next slide, Liz is going to get into quick detail about what we're thinking about with those categories.
So Susan just spoke briefly about our, you know, plan with fiscal year 24. This slide, we had a version of two weeks ago, but I thought it would be, you know, better suited to give you tangible ideas, you know, examples of what we're going to do with each category. So, you know, we put the first in italics because speakers' events and sponsorships, we're not asking for money this fiscal year. The plan, you know, that's for next fiscal year, but just to kind of give you an idea or, you know, of what we're thinking of doing with it. The training for community and staff, we're looking at doing youth mental health first aid for the staff in school systems, for healthcare providers, for potentially, you know, first responders. It's going to be, you know, something that we look at and see what is really doable in terms of the audience. Addiction 101 would be something else that we could put on for members of the community, staff, members of different organizations, that would give people a real good overview of, you know, so you have someone that's struggling with substance use, what now? Or what it may look like, or what behaviors may come along with somebody that's suffering from substance use disorder, so that, you know, the identification process is a little bit easier, maybe they can catch it a little bit sooner, you know, prior to a potential overdose, but then also have, you know, the knowledge on hand of what to do with that situation. The community outreach, RFP, I believe the draft application was also given in your packets, what I had drawn up, and that's being reviewed by John Coughlin right now as well. The marketing and programs materials, we had talked about, you know, doing... Our two weeks ago, doing marketing for a potential event, but we are looking at more using that now for like informational pamphlets, posters. We had kind of come up with some ideas, you know, to tag on to, I believe it's the July 4th road race, including in, you know, the bags that they come pick up, or the numbers that they come pick up, you know, bracelets with like the behavioral health helpline number on it, like either that or like a purple ribbon that kind of, you know, small things that will start to break up the stigma within the town surrounding substance use, get the community talking about the issue at hand, so that, you know, when we start to roll out bigger programs, there's more of a show of support, rather than the idea right now, which is like, I don't want to be seen, maybe talking about these things. And stigma happens in every community. It's hard to talk about. There's a lot of shame associated with substance use disorder, and, you know, to be able to bring that forward, but in have, you know, people support it, these small steps, I think, will start to take us in the right direction. So that's just, you know, tangible ideas of what we're looking at doing. Like Susan spoke about, the $5,000 that we're asking for for support services. In the past, people have shown up at the police department in search of a bed, and the one thing that they spoke about is they have, you know, no problem finding them a bed somewhere, but then the transportation piece, most often detoxes, as well as the police department, if you're under the influence, you cannot drive your car to go, nor can you... Will the detox allow you to take your own vehicle and leave it there for the term of your stay? And in addition to that, like I said, there is a lot of shame that comes with substance use, and reaching out to a family member and, you know, having to take that step and admit to them that you're putting yourself in detox, that's a lot to ask of a person that's, you know, reaching out for help. So that $5,000 would be for those circumstances where, you know, someone's ready to go, let's just get them there. So I think it's a good step for now to start supporting people that would like to go to treatment and would like to get into recovery, while we spend the next four months finalizing the process and everything that needs to go into, you know, supporting people that are going into a sober living environment and that voucher process. So in the next slide, we kind of outlined some of the steps that we have to take to get there. You know, that'll be something that we work on over the next four months. We have started to compile a list, both... I spoke about this a couple of weeks ago, Mashdade Certified Sober Homes, and our knowledge of, you know, what's available in the community. We, you know, we have to have talks about procurement and the payment process and, you know, finalize all of those details, as well as continue to work on, you know, a draft application, get it approved through Town Council, make sure it's something, you know, that's suitable to put out to the public. So I think, you know, considering those things, we can get them done in the next four months and have that ready for next fiscal year, but to have it ready for right now is a little bit difficult. And then, you know, the other line in that recovery, that supportive services, that's just again looking at, you know, some of the possibilities, the transportation piece we can do right now, but there are the other possibilities that we can use that supportive services line for.
Okay, great.
The one thing I would add to the presentation that we heard is, I think, one detail I've been thinking about around the... Around the contract, the grant idea would be to make that community outreach, RFP process for the grant program to be done through a reimbursable basis. That would actually give us, I think, the maximum amount of control to make sure that these funds from the settlement money is being used in the best ways possible. So it would give us the most control we could have. We would have to identify specific areas where the money can be spent, and I think then if the applicant would propose to use the money for that purpose, they would spend the money, and then they would issue us receipts, in essence, of what they've spent that money on, and then we would reimburse them.
Okay.
It's just, it's a little bit of a twist on this plan, but I think that more... I really want to make sure that this money is being controlled to the extent possible.
Right. Right. Excellent. Well, thank you for the additional work on this. Certainly have a lot, a lot to do, and I like the approach that you've proposed. I certainly want to see the data and learn more about what our community actually needs, and, you know, the numbers of substance abuse, referrals, who's seeking transportation. Another thing that I've been thinking about under support services is possibly childcare, if people need that. I think that would fall under that category as well.
It definitely would, yeah.
Okay.
It's in the abatement terms as something that's allowed use.
Okay, great. And another thing, just going forward for FY25, is just thinking about a regional approach. I think we all want to optimize this money as much as possible, but to be frank, it's not enough to save everybody or make a huge impact, but if we partner with our neighboring communities, we might be able to have a bigger impact. So that's something I would definitely be interested in exploring. Bill, do you have questions or comments?
A little bit. Can you go back to the slide we read in the breakdown?
Yeah.
Previous one. Nope. It was prevention and recovery lines, FY24.
Oh, this one.
Here we go. All right. So Liz, first of all, thank you for all your work. I know you put a lot of work on this over the last two weeks, and thanks for being more specific with it as well. So very much appreciate everything you did. So with respect to the different line items here, so like the Hingham Night Out, generally great, I think all of this is great, but Hingham Night Out, which is a great event, isn't that like community outreach? I mean, isn't it similar in terms of what the... In terms of the purpose of it and the intent of the program?
Yes. I mean, so it definitely is. I think speaking in terms of what we're trying to do with, you know, collaborating with the police department, we would be collaborating with the police department in the sense that we could contribute some of the funds to, you know, increase...
I think it's a wonderful program. Well, I guess my point of my question is, should we take more out of category three and put more into one, or take more out of three and put it into five? I mean, five seems like it's a pretty essential service.
The community outreach, RFP, though, would be to give a community group or coalition the ability to increase their own initiative outside of kind of what we're doing. So we have a great reach, you know, and I think what we are planning, though, may be very different from what an initiative that a community group or coalition may have, or what they already have in place, and the followings that they may have. So I think also supporting the community in what they're doing and showing, you know, the Town of Hingham that we're in support of, of also other groups that have, you know, a similar initiative for, you know, prevention, harm reduction, treatment, recovery, and just, you know, adding on to that, giving them a greater ability to do what they're already doing is important. So I think, I think $5,000 for that is a good fit, considering that we're not also doing anything in this fiscal year in terms of an event. You know, when we look further across, I don't know if we have to... We did keep it the same. I mean, that's something that we could reevaluate in the further years, when we're not contributing maybe necessarily as much to another event, or when, you know, we're looking more at putting money towards sober living beds and stuff like that. It may be great to, you know, move things around, but I think going for the next four months, what we've come up with, you know, fits.
And I do think they're important, and I agree with you that those groups are doing great work, but in terms of the order of merit list, I see like five being super important on the list, two being very important on the list, particularly, I love the fact you put, you know, youth mental health first aid in there, addiction 101, that's fantastic stuff, and I know that the first event is a bona fide, you know, home run in terms of the intent of it and how it's done usually. I'm just wondering if we were to create precedence, I would put some of these lower on the list and move more money into support services and some of the other categories we've been talking about.
Well, these aren't necessarily... Correct me if I'm wrong, but in priority order, right?
They're not.
Training is 5K, community outreach is 5K, marketing is 1,000, and support services is 5,000. Is that right?
Yeah.
Support services seems like a big one to me.
Yeah.
I would move more...
Increase that over five, you're saying?
I would. I mean, I'm just going to trust your opinion. You made a great argument, and you're very passionate last week, so I'm just going to... I think I'm going to trust your professional opinion right now and see how it goes, but I think going forward, that's where I'd like to see the money more spent, but that's just my opinion. I just think those categories are...
But we did, like, we're.
No, I.
In the, I, we did allocate more, so this, because it's only four months, so we're saying $5,000 for transportation, let's see what the need is from the police station. Then FY twenty-five, we have 15,000.
Right.
Allocated there, so we can, but we can change those numbers all around as we learn more on the needs from the police station and who needs transportation.
Sure.
And we can amend those, but for tonight, it's just FY twenty-four that we're looking at, and then as we learn more and get more data about what the real needs are in our community, this can all change.
Right.
And if, and we can work together and say, okay, I think this should be funded a little heavier, this is a whole working plan.
Okay.
But we can allocate more.
Yeah, I, I mean, some of the, and we, and we had a good discussion two weeks ago about it, but, okay, I mean, I like Tom's suggestion about some form of affidavit or something, hey, this was spent on the speaker, this is, you know, some sort of a invoice from the speaker, just make sure we have the money going to it, to, to best maximize the effort that we're looking to support here.
But one other idea, and I, and I wasn't quite sure how to propose the vote, so this is just, obviously, they're always just proposed votes, but what we put in here was, we didn't add the, the allocations in the vote, we asked you to allocate the total of $17,000 to those categories that we've outlined. If during our process, we find that it just simply doesn't make sense to allocate $5,000, for instance, to that, to that item, and that we just, we just learned something new, you know, two weeks from now that we need to allocate more to a different thing, this vote, as it's, as it's proposed, will give me the flexibility to do that. And then, that way, we can, again, try to maximize within the operational effort, the, the right place to put the money. So, I'm, what, what we're trying to give you guys is a sense of where we think it might be, best be allocated, but I know that it's not going to be five, five, one, one, and five. It's going to be forty-nine, ninety-nine, and, you know what I mean, there's, they're going to be different numbers, so we had to have some flexibility to allocate accordingly. But to your point, Bill, that the, there might be a better place for these dollars yet, and we're just gonna, we might figure that out in a couple of weeks, or a month, or more. So, the vote language as it's proposed now gives me the flexibility to do that. If you guys don't like it that way, and you want to allocate it by, by certain dollars, you can do that too. I don't have a horse in this race, so whatever you all, whatever you all want, however you want to do it.
Joe?
Yes, so, yeah, thank you for your work, I think this is, this is exceptional. Can you share what other communities are doing with their funds during this brief time period that's available?
It's also something that I can, like, send you a link for, but there is a dashboard. I think I included in your packet the report that we have to send back to the state on a yearly basis. So, there's a dashboard that all of the towns in Massachusetts are shown on, and basically, this report data is uploaded. Through what I've looked at, there are quite a number of towns that haven't spent a single dollar yet. A majority of the towns that I did look at, you know, for instance, Middleborough, more closer to Boston, a lot of, you know, towns have spent a larger number of dollars, they're doing similar things. A lot of work initially on prevention, for instance, Middleborough has an event coming up there, bringing in Achieve Greatness, and doing an event called Fake and Fatal. So, they're putting on, they're having, you know, the district attorney come out, they're having the town manager speak, they're having, you know, paramedics come out, and they're talking about the instances where somebody gets a substance that they think is one thing, and it turns out to be another, and, you know, turns into something fatal. So, they're do, doing a, a large event around education portion, and also as a, as a means of prevention, too. So, lots of towns are spending it, you know, prevention-wise. Some other towns have taken a much slower approach and are pulling together members of, you know, the community with lived experience, and, and hosting a panel to find out what they're thinking in terms of, you know, how the money should be allocated, but, you know, I think you'll find, I'll send you the, make sure I send it over to Tom, and he can distribute the, the link to the dashboard. It is very interactive, it's very cool to look at, but I think you'll find a lot of what you see is, is nothing spent, pretty much.
So, I mean, looking at what you, what you're proposing, you're holding back 94%, which is, I think, prudent, it's the right way to go, because you're really trying to figure out what makes the most sense.
Yeah.
So, I really appreciate the, the conservative nature, but you are taking action to spend something because it is a problem, and we do not want to be in denial. So, I really appreciate the work. Now, I'm, I'm comfortable with, with being proposed, and I like the flexibility that Tom's talked about, because you're right, you know, it's not going to be exactly $1,000 on something, and I want to make sure that you have the discretion, particularly given the dollar amounts that we're talking about here, to make sure that it's being spent wisely. So, so thank you.
And by the way, one other thing we didn't say is, we expect, maybe we did earlier, but we expect to be back before you guys for the FY twenty-five budget here in mid-June or so. With all the research that Liz is going to be putting together, we'll have a, a much more robust understanding of where we think this stuff should be more properly used.
Yes, yes.
We can work regionally, too, like you mentioned, so I have the regional grant with Cohasset and Situates, so I'm always talking to them about what they're doing with their opiate funds, because we can do something collaborative, because these issues don't stop at the border, so we're still looking into working with those, kind of making a bigger impact.
Right.
And social hospitals looking at doing something regionally, too, which will be interesting. I went to a staff meeting there this morning, so there's continued talks about, you know, regionally what we can, what we can do, because, big picture, it doesn't make sense to have, you know, seventeen different initiatives from the local towns, and if we can all contribute to, to something greater, it, you know, makes more sense.
In, in many ways, Shrek could be a, a model.
Yeah.
Where you've got, you know, a response team available that covers multiple communities. So, yep, that'd be great.
And the relationships pre-exist.
Yep, yep.
It's a very logical approach.
Twenty-five request would be big, it's gonna, it's gonna be 110,000.
Yeah, yeah, and that's really where we're hoping to be able to nail down the best place for this money to be allocated. Right now, we're just taking educated guesses.
Yes, I think we'll learn a lot over the next.
And the state's helping us. I mean, this took a while to roll out, and the guidelines and things like that, so there's a call on Thursday, we're going to learn more about what the state, different models they're suggesting, working with some of these groups that they've set up, this is what they do, and they can help us guide us, so we're, I think next week, we're on another call, there's a lot of good information coming out from the state to help all the municipalities with this funds, and the best way to spend them.
Yeah, good, good. Yeah, I would imagine, I mean, I was, did kind of a quick search myself, and it seemed like the presentations from the state were quite outdated, so glad to see that there's, there's new information.
There's a lot of movement, I would say.
Yes, and the MMA, I would think, would have some best practices or some models coming, so we're all, we're all learning during this phase, so a lot will happen in the next, really, less than four months, so a lot to do, so thank you for your efforts. Did you have any other questions or comments?
Nope.
Okay. Any questions or comments for members of the public?
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize the expenditure of $17,000 from the opioid special revenue fund in accordance with the Division of Local Services Bulletin 2023-7 for the following purposes: prevention, harm, reduction, and/or recovery, provided that the funds allocated for the grant process should be issued pursuant to a reimbursement policy to be established by the town administrator.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
I will note that we have the right person in the opioid coordinator role.
Yes.
Worked for the last few weeks with Liz, and passionate doesn't begin to explain, to, to, whatever, to describe how serious she, seriously she takes her drugs.
Yes, thank you, we are, we are agreed, for all your work. Thank you.
Good to see you, Susan.
Okay, next on the agenda, 2024 annual town meeting warrant article discussion. Article D, report of the personnel board.
Sure, so I think this is the third to last warrant article that might be.
Did you get closer to the, oh, you, Mike?
I believe this is the third to last warrant article that will be coming to the board this year before town meeting. It's one of the perennial articles that you typically see each year. It's basically accepting the report of the personnel board, which typically details the different actions that the personnel board took between last year's town meeting and this year's town meeting. They did note, they thanked Rob, Bob Curley for his service on the board, and Russell Kahn for coming back to fill kind of an interim spot, and then welcoming their newest member, Lynn Carroll. One of the major items, or a few of the major items that the personnel board worked on this year were, as you know, wrapping up the negotiation on the board's behalf of the agreement with the DPW supervisors, and they also made a change, or they're proposing a change to the personnel bylaw in terms of vacation, that was proposed by our office. So, hopefully, as long as this passes at town meeting effective January 1st of 2025, we'll be increasing the vacation that people start here, and, and sort of accelerating them through the process of earning more time as, as part of our efforts to improve recruitment and retention, so that's exciting, and we appreciate their support. This article also typically includes an amount that's budgeted to account for cost of living increases for non-union employees, and then an allocation for any union employees whose contracts have not yet been settled. I don't see it in these materials here, but I believe it's about 781,000, I can look it up if, if you'd like, I thought it would be in here. And Article Four is part of the municipal budget, so Article Four and pieces of Article Six are included in Tom's recommendations, and included in the calculation for our 3.5% under the MOU cap.
So, I'm sorry, the 781, is that part of Article Four?
It is Article Four.
It is Article Four, okay.
Let me just look it up real quick, because, I apologize, I thought it was in here.
And the personnel board voted on this unanimously?
They voted unanimously last week.
Great.
Does that increased vacation time apply to the select board?
Yes.
That's okay.
Not that you necessarily have to approve the number, but just so you know. Deep behind the scenes. 781,671.
That's impressive. Nice memory. Okay, I've, I've reviewed this, I don't have any questions. Joe, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Any questions or comments for members of the public? Excellent, thank you, Michelle. Ready to take a motion, if you're comfortable moving forward?
Make a motion to recommend favorable action on Article D.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Excellent. That's our only article for tonight, right? Next is review of potential updates to the anti-harassment policy. Michelle?
Sure, so I've been working with Kevin Fielding on this, and basically, the policy hasn't been updated in several years, it's still reflected the names of employees who have long since retired, so we're proposing some minor change, minor process changes, fixing those, you know, those old terms, and I also incorporated the gender-neutral language that the town voted a few years ago.
Yes, thank you for doing that. I have reviewed this, I don't have any questions. Joe?
I have also reviewed it, no questions.
Bill?
No questions.
Any questions or comments for members of the public? Okay.
I move to accept the changes to the town of Hingham's anti-harassment policy dated October 26, 2010, as presented.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you for cleaning that up. Uh, next on the agenda is public comment. Are there any members of the public that would like to make a comment on an item we haven't discussed yet? Okay, next, town administrator select board reports. Art?
Uh, nothing this evening, thank you.
Michelle?
Nothing as well, thank you.
Tom?
Nothing tonight, thank you very much.
Bill?
I was gonna note that the, the town's youth basketball program came to an end last weekend, and, you know, I had the privilege of coaching a fifth grade team this year, which was wonderful, and just want to thank everybody that runs the league and the travel program, you know, my daughter played as well, and so many volunteer hours go into these programs, it's amazing, and it benefits so many, so many kids who take part of it. So, basketball's just one of many sports, but just wanted to give a, uh, thanks to everybody who runs both the Hingham John Barker Program and the Hingham Gals Basketball Program, and for all the great work that they always do.
Excellent, thank you. Joe?
Nothing this evening.
Okay, I was just gonna report, I thought you might, Tom, is that Tom, Michelle, and I attended the MMA legislative breakfast meeting last Friday, which was great, to get together with other leaders in the region, and we got an MMA update on the FY twenty-five state budget, the Municipal Empowerment Act, and kind of what's, what's coming up. I rep, you know, Moschino was there, which was nice to see her, and she gave an update as well, so lots, lots more coming, so we'll, hopefully, we want to have Jo Moschino and Pat O'Connor come to one of our meetings, we still need to schedule that in the next month or so, hopefully.
As we get through the warrant, maybe, yeah.
Yeah. All right, excellent, I think, I think that's it. Ready to take a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We'll call a vote. Joe?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, we are adjourned at 6:46 PM. Thank you.